Welcome everyone to Township Council Meeting Monday, June 27, 2022. This meeting is now called to order. Councilmember Seaver, please lead us in pledge allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Mrs. Mrs. Kraus, please read the statement.
Take notice that adequate notice of this meeting has been provided in accordance with NJSA 10:4-8 and NJSA 10:4-10 as follows. Notice of the meeting was prominently posted on the bulletin board at the municipal building located at 225 Main Street, Little Falls, New Jersey, on March 11, 2022. A copy of the notice was mailed to the North Jersey Herald and News and the Record on the same date. Additionally, a copy of the notice was filed in the office of the Township Clerk on said date. A link in a telephone number to join the meeting virtually can be accessed on the township website at www.lfnj.com. Electronic provisions have been established for the public to participate during the public comment portion of the meeting.
Mrs. Kraus, please call the roll.
Councilmember Havletts. Councilmember Kwadi.
Present.
Councilmember Seaver.
Present.
Councilmember Vanchery.
Present.
Council President Scova.
Present. If there's no objections, we'll call them for a motion for the meetings, minutes of the meetings, May 23rd and June 13th. Have a motion.
So moved.
Moved by Councilmember Havletts.
Second.
Second by Councilmember Vanchery. Mrs. Kraus, please call the roll for the minutes of May 23rd and June 13th.
Councilmember Havletts.
Yes.
Councilmember Kwadi.
Yes.
Councilmember Seaver.
Absane.
Councilmember Vanchery.
Yes.
Council President Scova.
Yes.
Mayor, the floor is yours.
Thank you, Council President. Couple of updates. I just received word recently that Second Ave finally will be repaved, starting at the end of this week. On Friday, Second Ave is scheduled to be milled. On Tuesday, the 5th of July, they will be replacing all of the castings, which is manhole covers and catch basins and all of those things. And the following day, Wednesday, the 6th, Second Ave will finally be repaved. This has been a long time coming. This is as a result of the PSENG electrical upgrade project that connected the substation in Totowa to the substation in Cedar Grove. And it is finally scheduled to be repaved. We had some sewer work that was completed there. Prior to this, we had several setbacks with respect to this paving, but it will finally be repaved, starting at the end of this week. And within 10 days, again, provided the weather cooperates as always with paving, Second Ave will finally be repaved. So good news, good news for the residents along Second Ave. That project was primarily paid for by PSENG, who was required to resurface. A good portion of that roadway will be doing from Wilmore Road all the way up to the Little Falls boundary in Cedar Grove. And Cedar Grove has already repaved recently their section of the roadway. So Second Ave will be a brand new, again, within about 10 days. So that's the first part of the update. Pleased to see that finally moving along. That does not stop our regular road resurfacing program from moving forward. That will usually take place come September, October, a little bit later this year. And we will be proceeding with our regular road resurfacing program this year. Our DPW is currently in the process of compiling a list of the roadways in Little Falls that are in the most dire need of resurfacing. As we have explained here in the past, unfortunately, there were a number of years prior to myself and these council members taking office, that the road resurfacing program in Little Falls was suspended to save taxpayers' money. Unfortunately, it led to a lot of the roads falling into an incredible state of disrepair, which has now resulted in additional funds being required to be allocated to the road resurfacing pot in order just to really stay ahead of just roads becoming completely deteriorated rather than just in bad shape. So we are still playing some catch-up, but we will get there and we will be on track at some point soon. Next, Wilmore Park, and I'll be providing some more information about this in the upcoming days. But Wilmore Park has had many of the slides repaired and replaced. The ones that were damaged due to, a lot of them due to vandalism, unfortunately. They granted, they were much older, they were a little bit more fragile, but a lot of the slides at Wilmore Park have been vandalized. Some of them cracking maybe naturally to begin with due to the rage and then exacerbated by teenage children, for the most part, damaging and destroying them to a state of complete disrepair. So a lot of the slides have been replaced at Wilmore Park. This is just a temporary Band-Aid until we are able to utilize the almost half million dollars that the county has provided to us in grant funding to replace and put in a state-of-the-art playground at Wilmore Park. So more details on that to come in the upcoming weeks. And I look forward to Wilmore Park also being completed with some major upgrades. So the residents of Second Ave will have a new road and a new park to play in, in very short order.
Any questions or comments to the mayor? Mayor, do you have any update about when Main Street by the new townhome development may be done? And also, I noticed there's been some lights on in some of those units. Have we, have we have the new residents that have moved into those?
Yes, some of the townhomes, I believe the first 12 have either already been sold or are scheduled to close in the upcoming weeks. That's the first set nearest to where the new entrance to the entire development will be. So there are some new residents in town residing in those townhomes right now. It is the developer's intention, I believe, to close on another building approximately every six to eight weeks from here on out. They are continuing to move along. There is no date really that we are certain that it will all be completed yet at this point. But I know everybody's anxious to get that project completed. As far as while we're on the subject of Main Street in that area, the road recon, or I'm sorry, the water main improvement project that's traversing along Main Street from Montclair Ave through Route 23, they hit what I will call the end of the amount of work that can be done currently and will be returning soon. They are still waiting on final approvals from NJDOT and engineered plans in order to get the water line underneath the train tracks. Of course, that's not an area that they will tear up and, you know, place pipe and then repave over because of the train tracks. What they need to do is they essentially will dig a big hole on each side of the train tracks, about 50 feet away. And they will use a machine that will essentially drill through the entire 100 feet of roadway underground underneath the pipes. And then they will push pipes through the little tunnel that is created by this, this machine that does that and eventually connect both sides of the tracks to the new water main. So they are still moving along, but they are waiting on final plans that need to be approved by the New Jersey American Water, the state and DOT, I'm sorry, NJ Transit, in order to complete that project. So they are in a little bit of a holding pattern with that project right now.
Thank you, Mayor.
Excuse me, I have a question regarding that.
The floor is yours, Councilmember Seaver.
So just to clarify, I think you might have mentioned in previous meetings, but the water main replacement is not a new project. It's been several years in the making. Does it have anything to do with the developments? What is the cause of that roadwork?
Sure. So the project that is happening along Main Street, this is a project that has been, I guess, anticipated by New Jersey American Water for maybe six, even eight years now. Before, I knew about it as soon as I was mayor, I think there even during my years as council. It's probably six, seven, eight years old at this point now that they've been considering this improvement. It was discussed at the same time that the eastern portion of town water main improvement project was, was completed. And in the plan, since that one was as well, it was just that they were doing it in different phases. This section of town had, had a little bit higher water pressure already than compared to the eastern portion of town. But yet, no, this project has nothing to do with the, the new development. This simply has to do with the infrastructure and the ground being approximately 70 years old. This was more of a proactive approach by New Jersey American Water to ensure that there are not water main breaks because they are pushing water at higher pressures now. And they are doing so, again, they were in what were much older pipes. So to avoid main breaks, especially in the colder winter months, they are going to be abandoning the old line and transferring over to this new larger main that also runs at higher pressure.
And so follow-up question. So the, the paving is a little rough at this point. So can you speak to the paving or the repaving of what it is?
Sure. So what, what we require by ordinance is we do require several months after a trench is initially disturbed. We require several months for that ground to settle underneath because as you'll see, and as you probably witness now, a lot of the trench has actually, it may have started above the prior asphalt line and has since sunk down probably below it in many areas. And that is a result of, as much as they do compact the, the fill that they put into the trench over time with rainwater and different things and cars driving over it and the vibrations, it does compact down a little bit more and sink a little bit more. So we require a 90-day period for those trenches to resettle until they are able to mill and repave the roadway. Because it's a county roadway, particularly this, this section of Main Street, from the train tracks all the way up through the Peckman River Bridge in the middle of town, the county does require them to pour about a foot of concrete underneath the asphalt. And they will be required to do that before milling and repaving. So we are still some time away, but the good news is that the deal that we have made with the water company is that even though they may have only disturbed half of the roadway along Main Street, they will be repaving curb to curb along all of Main. They will also be repairing any curbs that they may have destroyed or sidewalks that they may have destroyed. And eventually coming back and doing restoration work for all of the grass and dirt areas as well. So the project will eventually allow, will have a full restoration of the entire roadway and the curbs and sidewalks that may have been disturbed.
Great. Thank you.
Any other questions?
No.
We'll move forward. Two nights ago, the mayor attended, along with councilmembers, of St. Valley High School graduation ceremonies. And it was a wonderful night. On behalf of the council and the mayor, we wish those graduates great success wherever they, whatever direction they may go, whether it's academics into the armed forces or into the employment workforce. We're very proud. We know two individuals, two, two excellent students that are there and their mothers sit on this dais. Jenna Havletts and Emma Seaver, daughters of Councilwoman Havletts and Councilwoman Seaver. They're on their way. One's going to be studying at Pace and the other one at Fordham University. So congratulations to those two women. It's great to see them moving on. Hopefully in five or six years, they'll be taxpayers.
Very good.
Council, Councilmember Havletts, the floor is yours.
Sure. Thank you, Council President. Thank you for the kind words. Yes, we attended St. Valley's high school graduation this year. Kudos to the new superintendent. It was a beautiful ceremony. The field looked beautiful. Kind words were said and the children were very happy after living in almost two years of a very different COVID world. It was very nice to have a nice, normal prom season and graduation. So congratulations to all of the graduates of both St. Valley and PCTI. Just some updates for the library. The library on June 19th kicked off their summer reading program, Oceans of Possibilities. We were very thankful that they kicked off their summer reading at the farmer's market along with children's musician Steve Polara, who is someone local to Little Falls. And he was there providing the music. It was a great day and very well attended. Some more upcoming library events. This Wednesday, the 29th, at 6:30, there will be their very popular drive and bingo. You can register on their website. You'll go into the lot that is across from the library and be able to play the family bingo. So it's always a well-attended event. Also, some other upcoming events. We will start the storytime for the summer in the park. That will be Thursdays. It began on June 30th and will run through August 18th. Every Thursday at 11:00 AM in the park. If there is inclement weather, it will be held at the library. And lastly, for the adults, they have happy hour yoga every Tuesday at 5:30. Bring a mat, dress comfortably. There is a $5 fee. That's all I have for the library. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Kwadi.
Thank you, Council President. A lot has gone on since our last meeting. Wanted to thank the Boy Scouts and the American Legion for participating in the Flag Retirement Ceremony that happened on Flag Day. Following night was the eighth grade graduation that we all attended. Congratulations not only to the high school graduates, but also to the eighth grade graduates as well. And we were there to, to witness that. Upcoming events. Tomorrow night, the Little Falls Biz Block Party has been postponed until tomorrow night because of the rain last week. So I know I'll be there. I believe some of my fellow councilmembers will be there as well. The Domestic Violence Prevention Committee will also be there. It's a great night out if you get a chance to come down. It looks to be a nice weather this time. And there are lots of vendors from in town. There will be food. There will be some other vendors there. There's usually a pie eating contest or two, one for kids and one for adults. So it's a, it's a good night. We encourage everyone to join us and it is at the corner of Main Street and Patterson Ave. On July 23rd, will be Water Fun Fest. We're looking forward to that. That's a Saturday afternoon at 2:00 PM at the rec center. Bring your water guns and your bathing suits and come on down. That's just a fun, fun event. And then right after that, the following Wednesday, the outdoor movie nights start. First one is Christmas in July, Christmas Story. The following week is Halloween in August with the Addams Family. And then Encanto, Raiders of the Lost Ark and Rat Tattoo League. So we hope everyone can join us at all of those events. Oh, and I believe this Thursday, the concerts in the park start as well.
Thank you, Councilmember Kwadi. This past Saturday, I was able to attend a great event. Tony Vanchery, the father of Councilman Member Chris Vanchery. City of Patterson named a street after him in, by Hayden Heights Park. I know Mr. Vanchery, longer that I've known Chris, I can go back 25, 30 years. He has great dedication to the veteran services and what he has done to keep the veterans in the forefront of the community, especially in Patterson. So that was quite an honor to be there, Chris. Councilman Vanchery.
Thanks, Council President, and thank you for being there on Saturday. And I know you and my dad go back a long way and you've helped with a lot of those monuments there at that park. So, you know, he's always been appreciative of all the work that you and your brother have done. So thank you for that. I just have a few updates, nothing crazy. I think, you know, we're all going to say it tonight, but just want to say congrats to all of the graduates. You had a chance to attend Friday's graduation at St. Valley High School and it was a beautiful ceremony. And Superintendent Dr. Brock Healy is doing a great job over there. And congrats to Councilwoman Seaver on Emma's graduation and Councilwoman Havletts on Jenna's graduation. I know you two are proud of them. It's a great thing for them. And I know you guys are looking forward to them going off to college in another six weeks. So, and also want to say congrats to school number one. As Councilman Kwadi said, we had a chance to attend the graduation that was held at the, our Little Falls Recreation Site, you know, on the turf field this little over a week ago. And it was a really nice ceremony. It was good to see the kids out there and, you know, all the families. So congrats to all of the graduates. I do also want to mention, because I know Mr. Pace and Mr. Pacero will call me if I don't. The rec camp starts next Tuesday at the rec center. So the summer camp kicks off. They're excited about that. The notice went out to all of the families that signed up, their children for the camp that will run starting next Tuesday, July 5th. So they're looking forward to that. I do also want to recognize some of the sports teams and I know Mayor, Mr. Pace and Mr. Pacero are working on coordinating everything. But we had for this past spring baseball and softball season, there were four teams that actually won on the recreation side. So kudos to the third and fourth grade boys coached by Coach Appoluccio. Coach Litten Teens, third and fourth grade girls also won the championship. Coach Rec for fifth and sixth grade boys and then Coach Taylor for seventh and eighth grade girls. So congrats to all of the coaches and their players. We're looking forward to honoring them, likely down by the rec center at some point, but just wanted to mention that. Last thing I do want to mention is on Monday, July 4th, Little Falls PBA is having their July 4th Street Fair from 10:00 to 5:00 PM. So if you are around on Monday and you're looking to do something, please, you know, stop by this event that's run every year by the PBA. It's a good event. They'll have a lot of different vendors there. They'll have food trucks as well. So if you're looking for something to do on the holiday, please stop by. That's it for me.
Thank you, Councilman Vanchery. On our meeting on July 11th and August 18th, we'll be conducting our meetings here, but in a town hall style. And what does that mean? We'll run through a few formalities in the beginning and then we'll open up to residents. We'd like to have dialogue with the council, the mayor and staff. And that will be the only thing on the docket. We won't go through reports. We won't have committee reports. We won't have resolutions. We'll just be here for the residents and go right into it and have that dialogue. And again, that will take place on July 11th and August 18th. That will also be done in Zoom as well. Councilmember Seaver, the floor is yours.
Thank you, Council President. Thank you for everybody's well wishes on the graduation of my daughter and Councilwoman Christine Havletts' daughter. It's hard to even discuss without getting teary because it's such a wonderful time. So however, going back to business, at the Little Falls Farmer's Market, we're glad to have add a second farmer to our market. The feisty pest, the feisty pepper will be there, not this coming week, but the following week for the rest of the market. So we were glad to see him at this past market. Last market, we also had a cupcake decorating contest sponsored by Mo and Jay's Bakery here in town. If everybody remembers, Jay from Mo and Jay's was the Spring Baking Challenge winner on Food Network. And the contest was actually judged by our Little Falls librarian, children's librarian Linda. And she had a very tough job to pick because I have to tell you, I was very much impressed. So thank you much, thank you very much to Linda for doing that. This coming Sunday, July 3rd, it's a holiday weekend, but just like anything, regardless of holiday, rain, shine, the market still continues on. So we will be featuring a bounce house for children, which is a great activity, especially for anybody who may not be going away and looking for some free activities for their children. So please stop by the Little Falls Farmer's Market at 225 Main Street at the town hall parking lot. And then just looking forward, we also are in the midst of planning our future events. If everybody remembers from past years, in September, we will be hosting our townwide garage sale in September. And then followed by the first Sunday in October, which is our Run Little Falls 5K. So more information on that will be coming out soon, but planning is well underway and looking forward to bring those events to the township of Little Falls. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Mayor D'Amiano, would you have anything you want to add?
Yeah, I am thrilled to be able to announce that after, I think it's been four, five arduous years with PNC Bank, the township of Little Falls, as of late last week, now officially owns the parking lot in downtown Little Falls that previously belonged to PNC Bank. So we're in the process of installing a sign, at least for now, that will indicate that the parking lot is for public use and public parking. The sign was ordered today and to be installed as soon as it arrives. So we are very pleased about that. Now that we officially own it, we can also begin the process of demolishing the three homes on Stanley Street that the township has purchased over the past four or five years. And we can begin the engineering of maximizing the parking spaces that we will be able to achieve in that lot. There is also some discussion about the potential to utilize what is now the area of Stanley Street between school one and the parking lot. And essentially shutting that down and making it part of the downtown parking lot and eliminating the roadway there. Before doing that, I'd like to have conversations with the residents in that area of town. One of the big concerns that has been raised by the residents in that area is, is this going to increase traffic in our neighborhoods? And it's certainly something that I can appreciate and a concern that they have raised. And I think that by potentially closing down the roadway, if it's something that a majority of the residents are in favor of, it will may be able to accomplish two things. One would be reducing the amount of vehicular traffic in that area because there would be no way to cut through and utilize that street to get down into that area. And the second is we may be able to increase the number of parking spaces there. We have talked to the schools about this as well because it is a roadway that really butts up to the school. And it seems that they are on board. We're going to have additional conversations with them now that we have finally purchased this lot and it has become a reality. Like I said, we are pleased that that has finally been concluded and that we own that parking lot for public parking. So residents, feel free to park there. This addresses what has been one of the biggest concerns that I've heard about Little Falls and its downtown. The, one of the biggest complaints that I always get, again, whether I agree or not, in the sense that I believe there is parking in the immediate proximity of downtown, almost at all times with the Mars Canal Lot. But now with this PNC lot, we will certainly have bountiful downtown parking. So feel free to park there. Residents, again, it's open for public use. Feel free to use it as you wish now.
Thank you, Mayor.
Oh, and Council President, if I may, we heard Councilman Kwadi briefly touch upon the fact that the concerts in the park are starting this week, this Thursday. The market at the concert begins at 6:00 PM. Concert begins at 7:00 PM. Feel free to join everybody down there in Wilmore Park beginning this Thursday.
Thank you, Mayor. Council Enzo.
The mayor stole my thunder.
With?
So about the PNC lot, we have been waiting for a very long time for that, but we, we have completed that purchase. And I'm very pleased to have that finally concluded. So I thank you, Council President.
Thank you, Council Enzo, for putting on, imagine if I was PNC Bank and the, the way your, the real estate was going, I would have loved to backed out of that deal. So I appreciate your hard work with the mayor and making sure we secured the lot that we were after for so many years. Have a motion to open the meeting to the public for agenda items only.
So moved.
Moved by Councilmember Kwadi, second by Councilmember Vanchery. All those in favor of that motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, do so by signify by saying nay. Mrs. Kraus.
Anyone wishing to address the Township Council may do so through the Council President. Please give your name and address for the record. Comments are to be limited to three minutes. However, if appropriate, you may be granted additional time in the sole discretion of the Council President. Members of the public who have joined the meeting virtually and desire to provide comments shall raise their virtual hand in Zoom application. The meeting moderator will cue the members of the public that wish to provide comment and the Council President will recognize them in order. Members of the public who have joined the meeting by calling in must press star six to mute and unmute themselves and star nine to raise their hand. Members of the public who have joined the meeting via the Zoom application must click the reactions icon and then the raise hand icon. Please give your name and address for the record. Once the process is complete, we will return to the regular order of business.
Thank you. The floor is open.
Anyway, Louis Fernandez, Little Falls.
Good evening.
Good evening. I don't know if you mentioned these things, both of you, the councilmen and the mayor mentioned a few things. I don't see them on the agenda, so I don't know if I should talk about them now or maybe later.
Go, go ahead. We'll see what's up.
Starting with, since we finished talking about the PNC Bank, the parking lot. Can you tell us, can you remind us again, what did he sell for?
The, the selling price, Mayor?
Yeah, it was 273,000 and.
If I can, the purchase price was 270,000. For, yeah, wow.
It is good. It's a good price.
Thank you.
Also, I saw, I could swear that it was in the email that the township send me, sends to all the residents. But it might not be. It might have been somebody else's email that the township had received a grant for 29, $29,000 for, for repairs. Or it's on the agenda maybe for, from the county, from the commissioners, to, to do some repairs to the.
Bridge?
To the bridge. Was it on, is it, was it on the agenda, our agenda or is it, is it on the county's?
It's, it's on the county agenda. Mary, would you like to elaborate on that? It's on, on the county agenda.
Yeah, I can briefly explain. That, that's a project that the county is funding to shore up the area around the East Main Street Bridge. A lot, there was a lot of erosion to the area preceding the bridge upstream in the river. And a lot of damage was caused. I believe that these funds are going to be utilized to shore up those banks to ensure that the erosion in that area doesn't continue, eventually compromising or undermining the bridge.
Yeah, the, the thing that I, why, the reason why I'm mentioning is because $29,000 right now, it doesn't buy you a shed.
Much.
Are they funding just the, the study or the actual work?
I don't know. That's a, that's on the county's agenda. That's an area that they're responsible for maintaining.
You might be right. You, you might have been the county, so.
But Mr. Fernandez, when we do, if we do find out, we'll find out that information and we'll definitely have that, those answers.
Also, I see that Resolution E on tonight's agenda, it says that we have to appoint a new municipal tax assessor. I guess he's replacing Richard Hamilton?
That, that is correct.
Okay. Because I, I got, Richard Hamilton used to be the tax assessor and the lady that sits right here is, what is she?
Tax collector. Tax collector.
The collector, okay. Thank you.
You're welcome.
I have another question, but I'll, I'll, uh.
You can ask now if you want.
Yeah.
Anyone here, go ahead.
You don't mind. Um, I'm gonna, I'm gonna ask, uh, something, talk about an ordinance that was put into the books. I'm sure you were here, Mayor, Mr. Mayor. Um, a few years back, I don't think it has ever been implemented. And the other day, he became a problem. What I'm talking about is the basketball hoops on the street. I don't know if you are aware what happened last Thursday, right on the corner of, um, Harrison and Ryland. And I wish the, uh, I, I had hoped that the, uh, the chief of police was here, but he's not. Um, a car made a left turn. And I think he ran over two kids and then took off. Uh, I just saw one kid, uh, bleed. Um, they were playing out on the street. The hoop, the basketball hoop is way at least two, three feet into the street. So, I mean, I blame the car. Should have been, you know, more, uh, I, I guess should have been, uh, paying attention, the, the, the driver. But again, the, uh, an ordinance was put in the books, uh, a few years ago to avoid all this, to prevent all this. It was never reinforced. In fact, right after the accident, right after the, uh, the accident the other day, I drove around Meyer, Jackson Park. I counted six basketball hoops on the street. The street is not to play basketball. The street is made for the cars. You don't see any cars driving around Duba Field or the basketball courts or anything like that. The car, the, 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 the streets are made for the cars. I hate to be the one that brings up, because everybody thinks that I'm the bad guy. Something could have happened to those kids. They could have been dead. Because the car was a little speedy, on, uh, he was speeding and, um, and I think one or two, at least I saw one, but somebody's, uh, told me, uh, two kids got hurt. It could have been prevented very easily by removing those, uh, those basketball hoops. I hope that, uh, that it doesn't happen again. I don't like to see anybody hurt. But, uh, maybe it's time to start reinforcing all those things, especially when we have to park three hundred yards away. There's no, no reason to play basketball in, in, on the street.
Mr. Fernandez, no one on this day, so the staff think you're, quote, the bad guy at all. So, you know, we appreciate you attending the meetings and bringing information forth. Mayor, would you like to comment on the information that Mr. Fernandez said to us this evening?
Sure, I can comment on a couple of them. I'll start with the basketball hoops. The first of which was the intention of the basketball hoop ordinance was not to stop kids from playing in the street. Um, that was not the original intention of the ordinance, although, again, if somebody was struck by a vehicle, that's, that's absolutely a terrible and tragic. That should not happen. And again, certainly while, while it's dangerous to be playing in the street as a kid, drivers in a specially residential neighborhood should really be extremely careful. Um, and kids playing in the street in the middle of it is pretty obvious, more so than even a young child jetting out into the street. Um, but the ordinance, um, and portion of the ordinance that we have here uh, indicates that no portable or in-place private basketball hoop system may be temporarily or permanently placed within or so as to obstruct the public right-of-way. Such private systems may not be placed on public streets or sidewalks at the edge of curb lines so as to encroach or overhang public streets, nor where vehicles may be parked on public streets and public parking lots. And again, the reason that the ordinance was worded this way and the intention of it was that the, uh, plow trucks were having difficulty in the winter plowing the areas where basketball hoop systems were overhanging. And our street sweeper was also unable, because again, the hoop is overhanging and not all that high sometimes. The street sweeper was unable to adequately clean the curb lines. Um, it was not to stop kids from playing in the streets. Again, although possibly dangerous at times, um, you know, I, I, I'm not here to stop kids from playing outside and playing sports. I think it's something that we don't see any, enough of anymore. Um, but the ordinance continues to read that there's a duty to remove it after notification is provided. Um, and that the Police Department and Superintendent of Public Works can enforce the provisions, uh, of that, uh, of this ordinance that we have here in town. Um, so again, it is something that, again, while, while that's tragic that that happened and that's absolutely terrible, the intention was not to stop kids from playing in the street. It was to allow, uh, you know, DPW operations to continue without issue.
Actually, I hate to disagree with you, but, uh, we would call that it was also for safety reasons.
Again, and definitely a benefit of it, certainly.
I was also, while that happened after a while, um, all the, uh, some of the residents got together and there was a, a resident, I guess, from, uh, Jackson Park that said, not only they are on the street, but the other day I almost hit one because they are black. The, the poles are black and at night you can barely see them. So not only is, is becoming a, um, it could have been a tragedy, but it could be also an accident, a car accident. Um, like I said, they're still there. Not that I want them removed. I don't want, I want the kid to be a kid. But that's why the township provides, uh, uh, the park. That's why they spend so much money, you know, so much money spent dearly in, 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 in a recreation center in the parks and so on and so on. And like I said, for, for a kid to be hurt, that will be, if, 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 thank God, you know, not, nothing happened and it seemed to be all right as far as I. But, um, it could have been a tragedy, it could have been especially, I hope we have cameras around there. I don't know if, if we do or somebody caught the, uh, the speeding car, the fleeing car. Uh, he should have been taught a lesson. I guess he was distracted. He, I don't know. I don't know what happened. We all have bad moments. He made the wrong decision.
And Ms. Fernandez, if I may just respond to your PNC question as well about the purchase price. You may recall that at the time, five years ago, when we entered into the contract with PNC Bank, that the provisions of the contract were such that the reason we were getting such a good deal with PNC was because we entered into an agreement where so long as the building and the structure continued to operate as a bank, uh, that, uh, and we allowed them to have five parking spaces up close for, for their, their customers and ten in the rear of the parking lot wherever we designated. Um, they essentially allowed us to purchase the lot for fifty percent of what the fair market value of that lot was roughly. Um, fortunately for us, the contract that we entered into with the absolute diligence of our counselor up here, uh, it indicated that if the operations of that building ceased to be utilized as a bank, that those spots were then forfeited to the town as well and did no longer needed to be allocated to that building. Now, that's not to say that PNC isn't going to sell to another bank. They very well may. And if they do, then those spots will continue to exist for a bank. But if PNC sells that building to anyone other than a bank, those spots become the benefit of the township twenty-four seven, uh, as well. And, uh, we entered into what I would call an outstanding contract, uh, with them in light of us getting these spots. PNC now closing and the high improbability of a bank opening another branch this day and age, when we see bank branches constantly closing. Uh, so I, 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 I think we got what is an outstanding deal on that lot. I'm glad that we entered into that contract five years ago. Because had we not, PNC may have very well been selling that building and that lot right now to someone else, um, who may have done something very different and not allowed for additional downtown parking. So I think we got a steal on that lot. Um, and I think, uh, again, it's to the benefit of the residents, the price that we got it at, uh, and the benefit that it will provide.
Thank you, Professor Wenzel.
Does the council, um, have any questions or comments regarding what Mr. Fernandez brought forward?
I just have one quick thing. Um, Mr. Fernandez, I know you mentioned too, with the basketball hoops, about the, the police enforcing the ordinance. And ironically, on Saturday, I actually got a call from a resident who had the same situation where they had the basketball hoop on the street and a resident called to complain and the officer went by and let them know about the ordinance and told them to move it back. So they pushed it towards their driveway because a lot of people do have them. I have one. I leave it in the driveway. My one neighbor, he puts it in front of the house, but he pushes it further back because he knows not to put it on the street. But it is something that, you know, a lot of families have at this point and depending on your street, you would dump it over. But I just wanted to let you know it is enforced because it happened on Saturday.
Actually, well, it might be enforced in your, but, uh, like I said, in my area, I counted six. And since we don't have sidewalks in that area of town, they put them on the street because he sees them. Otherwise, they have, they put them on, on the grass. Since, uh, it's a slope down, they tilt it down. So, uh, it, it is, it is, they are, I must say, they are in the, uh, you know, a few feet into the pavement.
Mm-hmm. Absolutely. I have the same thing. I don't have a sidewalk either. So that's why people utilize the grass. But I just wanted to let you know it is enforced because ironically it came up over the weekend.
Have a motion to close, anyone on Zoom, Mr. Kusia? Okay, have a motion to close the public comment?
So move.
Moved by Councilmember Quadi, second by Councilmember Vancheri. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed signify by saying nay. Motion carries. Have a motion to approve the consent agenda. Moved by Councilmember Havilts, second, second by Councilmember Vancheri. Mrs. Kraus, please call the roll for the consent agenda.
Councilmember Havilts?
Yes.
Councilmember Quadi?
Yes.
Councilmember Seaver?
Yes.
Councilmember Vancheri?
Yes.
Council President Scova?
Yes. Have a motion to open the meeting to public and, public, uh, to the public for general matters.
So move.
Moved by Councilmember Seaver, second by Councilmember Vancheri. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, this motion do so by saying nay. Motion carries. Mrs. Kraus.
Anyone wishing to address the Township Council may do so through the Council President. Please give your name and address for the record. Comments are to be limited to three minutes. However, if appropriate, you may be granted additional time in the sole discretion of the Council President. Members of the public who have joined the meeting virtually and desire to provide comment shall raise their virtual hand in the Zoom application. The meeting moderator will cue the members of the public that wish to provide comment and the Council President will recognize them in order. Members of the public who have joined the meeting by calling in must press star six to mute and unmute themselves and star nine to raise their hand. Members of the public who have joined the meeting via the Zoom application must click the reactions icon and then the raise hand icon. Please give your name and address for the record. Once the process is complete, we will return to the regular order of business.
Thank you. Floor is open. Mr. Kusia, anyone on Zoom? Have a motion to close the public comment. So moved by Councilmember Vancheri, second by Councilmember Seaver. All those in favor, do so by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed that motion, do so by saying nay. Motion carries. On behalf of the mayor and the council, we wish the residents of Little Falls a very safe and enjoyable Fourth of July. It is a wonderful time, uh, to be celebrating the Fourth of July in the United States of America. So please do it with caution and safety, but definitely have a great time. Uh, have a motion to adjourn this meeting.
So move.
Moved by Councilmember Seaver, second by Councilmember Quadi. All those in favor of joining, adjourning the meeting, do so by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, do so by saying nay. This meeting is now closed.